Call the meeting to order. Council London, Council Spivey.
Present.
Council Bearden.
Yes.
Council Wilson.
Present.
Myself present. And y'all have had a chance, the minutes were sent out ahead of time with a second set of corrective minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Like a motion that we approved the minutes for the pre-council meeting and regular council meeting of March 20th. Uh, I see. The, uh, speaking, uh, reading of minutes being transferred to us, uh, to approve this committee.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Council Spivey?
Yes, sir. I would like to approve, um, I would like to make a motion for the approval of current bill for payment in the amount of eighty-six thousand, seven hundred, thirty-two dollars and thirteen cents.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Do we have any professional or consultant reports tonight? All right. Mayor?
Yes, for the first part of my, uh, report, I'm going to defer some time to David Pugh. David is the, uh, chairman of the Commercial Development Authority. Uh, we've made some good strides here over the past, uh, short while. David Pugh, come and share, uh, comments from the CDA.
Good evening. And thanks. Uh, I'll be brief. The main purpose for my being here is to speak on behalf of the Commercial Development Authority, which, uh, is comprised of myself, a newly-elected chair, uh, Cindy Quayart, who's here, Aaron Sims, who is here, David Rawson, who is not, and Terrence Scott, who is not. Uh, but we have been watching with great interest the upcoming special election, as well as, uh, the mayor's office, uh, the mayor's efforts and the city council's efforts to rein in, uh, some of the spending, get a handle on the deficit. And we have this to report. We resolved unanimously to endorse, uh, the effort to raise, uh, additional tax revenue with property tax. So we'd like to go on record saying the CDA strongly supports that effort, and we would encourage all Irondale citizens to vote in favor of that increase. Uh, we also, as a show of our support for the city's efforts to address the deficit, uh, we voted unanimously to transfer two-hundred thousand dollars of CDA funds to the city to be applied as needed at the city's discretion. And if I may, just make a couple of points as to how we reached our decision. The salient things about the proposed property tax, uh, the most salient points, I think there are three. One, we have a deficit. It's probably not worth our while to waste time trying to find blame for an operating deficit. A lot of those expenditures were investments, and I think we will one day reap the benefit of some of those investments, but it has resulted in a real-time, immediate operating deficit. That's of interest to all of us, and addressing that prudently and responsibly is what we need to do. Number two, this administration appears to be doing aggressively the things that are needed to be done to address that deficit. They have reined in spending, they have negotiated contracts in a way to reduce the outlays. We support that effort and that continued effort, and that's the reason for our resolution. But lastly, if we are to be, if we are to position the, the city so that it can move forward and take advantage of some of the progressive, innovative ideas that have come out of efforts like Irondale on the Move, we need to increase our revenue from property taxes. The evidence, the objective evidence is clear, we are at or near the bottom in property tax revenue. A very modest increase has been proposed, and it will position us so that we can take advantage of those progressive efforts, improving our infrastructure, pursuing some specific economic development initiatives, and improving our recreational, uh, venues in the city. And so, for that reason, the CDA strongly supports the increase in property tax and is proud to participate in addressing the operation deficit that the city is now experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. On behalf of, uh, the, and the CDA members for your actions, uh, I think that's something that this council should wholeheartedly, uh, recognize, see, and appreciate, uh, what you all have done. Thank you for your unanimous support, uh, of the moving Irondale forward, uh, the tax initiative. We, uh, you know, people ask me, well, what, what happens if we don't vote for it? Well, I think that's obvious, you know? We don't have those funds then to do the things that you want, that you need, that you expect a city to do. So thank you for, uh, the CDA's leadership on that. I certainly appreciate that, and I want to address the, the council on that as well. I certainly hope that you all individually and collectively recognize the big step that we've been taking here, something that you all requested, uh, it has been done, and, uh, certainly, I think, is appreciated by many, many folks. Um, I, I hope that you all also, uh, are just as passionate about standing behind the tax referendum. Uh, after all, it is a, it is an initiative that was initiated with you, that came from the council. It's the only way that we as residents can have the opportunity to vote on it, is that you put it in play. And so I hope that you will, between now and Tuesday, will be speaking positively, will be reaching out to folks, uh, who, who may have questions. I had one of our residents here tonight said, "Been a great town hall meeting here last week," and said, "I went home and I talked to two of my neighbors and condensed them." And, uh, I won't single them out, but he's sitting right back there on the second row in front of you. But that's, that's what we, we should all be doing. You know, we've got, you all heard me talk about the days and stuff of this term, we've got about two and a half more years, right at two and a half more years in this term. And it's time for us to, to take the focus off ourselves, take the focus off of the distractions, take the focus off of anything that leads us astray. And as a council and as an administration from the mayor's office, it's time for us to start pulling together, to work together, to make the city what it can be. And we need to do that. And I hope that you will commit with me. I, I don't want to spend the next two and a half years spinning my wheels. I, I don't think any of you do either. I think you've got more important things to do than to be running in place. So we need to be moving forward. I hope that we will all join together, that we, we will see the big picture, uh, and we'll see that what benefits all, benefits one, what benefits one, benefits all, that we'll be pulled together in that way. Uh, so I, I kinda hate to, to break the, the momentum here, but I do want to give you a couple of announcements and updates. Uh, stormwater issues, uh, the new stormwater initiatives that we're required to put into place are, are fast approaching us. Those are, uh, that plan, our plan, is online now, you can go to the website, and you can see that online. Uh, it's one of the requirements of the new plan that we have to do to make sure that it's there and it's available for people to see, to read, or comment on, and it is on our website at this point. Also, there's been a question about, uh, lights on the interstates. We, you all approved, and I appreciate that, you approved some funding, uh, some months ago, uh, for some of that to be done. We're working with utility lawn service, they have updated some of those and will continue to be updating some with that twenty, there's twenty thousand dollars that you all allotted. Uh, we've been able to partner with the state, which is taking some of the cost burden off of that, so we're getting more done than we would have gotten done a year ago, uh, because the state's actually doing some of the early work that, uh, research and finding out what needs to be done and investigating the problems. And so they're covering some of that early cost, and we're coming in and covering the costs, I'm actually getting the lights working. Those are at Old Leeds and I-20 and Kilbore Memorial and 78, it's the interstate lighting, um, that, that is the project that we're talking about. Uh, the website, I, I mentioned to you last meeting, the website is nearly ready to, to be downloaded. Uh, we did not, we chose not to do it before the tax referendum because we didn't want anyone to have to look anywhere different for the information that was on there, so we'll be doing that shortly after the tax referendum, Tuesday, probably on Wednesday. We'll be, um, uploading the, the new website, launching it, uh, so you can look forward to that. Um, we have, um, this month is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Where's, is she still here? Nope. You'll see blue light on the, on the building here that will highlight Child Abuse Prevention, sponsored by the Exchange Club. And, um, I think that is all my comments for this one.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And we'll start out, do we have any standing committee or special committee reports? All right. Council Wilson, would you like to lead us off tonight?
Yeah, I can. Um, good evening, everyone. Just wanted to, um, encourage everyone to go out and vote on next Tuesday, uh, no matter what your conviction is, do exercise that right. Also, the Holiday Gardens Neighborhood Association, we still have a meeting, uh, next week, on next Tuesday at six-thirty. Uh, from my understanding, uh, the voting shouldn't take that long if you have to kinda go out, out of the meeting, uh, for a few minutes to vote. Uh, if you can, that'll be fine. Lastly, again, I know I've said this before, it's like beating a dead horse, but if we could, um, kinda get together next week, or this week, I'm sorry, and let's look at our ordinance, uh, our, um, parking ordinance.
Did you send me some pictures?
I did.
Okay.
I did. I sent you some pictures. Plus, I received some emails, uh, from some citizens about, you know, some cars that's, that's parked in the yard. Uh, Council London and I, we have also discussed, um, it seems as if we have a lot of car dealers, uh, in holiday gardens. They may be in other areas, but I know they're in holiday gardens, where they're selling cars, you know, in front of their home, you know, out of their yard, so, um, we definitely need to address that, so, yeah, if we could, let's look into that. Um, next, Mayor, if, uh, we could, could you kinda give us an update, you know, I said before about updating us on the garbage pickup, um, as far as how are we looking, as far as the figures, how much we've saved? I know I've said that before, and employees, that was assigned during that time, what are we doing with them now?
Yeah, I brought those, I brought those numbers. I think you might have missed that next meeting last time you asked, but I'll get those again and bring those.
Yeah. I've only missed one meeting, so.
Okay.
And I was working.
No, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, I didn't have those numbers that next meeting I covered and gave the, oh, I'll, I'll just, I don't have them with me now.
Um, last, I think this is a label question. Do we have an update on the EEOC complaint of the city?
I don't have one. He has.
Okay.
It's not been around.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Bearden?
Thank you. Uh, ladies, we still need some contestants for the Miss Senior Irondale pageant. Need one.
We need one.
We need, we need ten. If you're sixty or older, you don't have to have a talent, we'll help you find one.
That's right.
Uh-oh. Cal just volunteered to be part of it. But, uh, yes, if you, uh, would like to, uh, contestant in the Miss Senior Irondale pageant, you'll see my wife Regina, or if you'll contact me, I'll get you in touch with her. Uh, I went over to the ballpark this, uh, this afternoon and, uh, looking at all that dirt and concrete piled up in the parking lot, and while I was there, Alex from Sam Associates pulled up, and he and I talked a little while, and he had Matt call me, and I talked with Matt, Mayor, and he said he's gonna get with the contractor and see if he can't get him, get all that stuff up and out of the way within the next week or so. So, um, hopefully we'll have a, a parking lot out there for him. Uh, now, there's one other thing on our agenda tonight, is a agreement for GMD. Uh, they are an appliance company, and the company that I work for, my day job, is also an appliance company. However, I've talked to our city attorney, uh, they sell the Cadillac of appliances, and I sell Chevrolet. Uh, we do not have, uh, any nexus between our business and theirs, they're not customers of ours, we are not customers of them, uh, so therefore, the mayor, I mean, the city attorney said there would be no conflict of interest with my vote tonight that she saw. So I just want to let, uh, before any discussion comes up about that, I just want to head it off and let you know that, uh, that we are, uh, I have no financial, uh, or business, uh, association with a company whatsoever, so, uh, my vote is not, uh, being in conflict. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Council Spivey.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, two things, the Clean as a Whistle, uh, campaign is coming up, sponsored by the Exchange Club. It is going to be, uh, April twenty-first through twenty-eighth. So basically, what'll happen is you have the ability to kinda get rid of a, a good bit of more stuff than normal, uh, and then as, uh, as the, uh, the garbage and trash collection moves through the community, uh, they will be picking that up. So help clean up your neighborhood by participating in our Clean as a Whistle campaign. This is a great opportunity to get rid of that treasure, trash, and annoying clutter. Bags are available from Public Works Department, um, and then John Shon as well, who's not with us right now, uh, as well as Joyce Franklin. I've got some communication information up here if you need to reach out to any of those mentioned. Um, city employees will pick up the following materials left at the curb during the week of the twenty-first through the twenty-eighth. Bagged grass and leaves, paint cans, open and dry, filled with dirt, appliances, furniture, building, building materials not from contractors, batteries, tires, and oil will not be collected. Um, and just some other in general stuff that I've got up here handy if you want to see exactly what it is. So always a great event to kinda get rid of some stuff as you're doing your spring cleaning. Um, another thing, Rougher Mountain will be having their plant sale, uh, this Saturday from, I think, eight-thirty, nine o'clock to two. I know technically the Nature Center is located in Birmingham, but they're, they do share a footprint, obviously, with us in, uh, in Irondale, great organization. Uh, we usually go up there every year and come home with some, some neat stuff. A lot of people there, handy to educate you about, um, natural plants, how to, how to utilize them in your, in your yard and stuff like that, really, really neat stuff. So I hope you guys could make it out for that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Council London?
First of all, good evening, everyone. I just got some, some real positive, uh, positive news. Uh, if you watched the NCAA basketball tournament, Mississippi State versus Notre Dame, uh, if you felt like me, I feel like I was coaching and playing in the game, uh, but one of our very own, Morgan Williams, he got beat again at the buzzer, and it was a heartbreaking experience. But, uh, she played at Shades Valley High School, and we watched a young lady grow up from, from a baby to where she's at. So we're so proud of her for what she's done, uh, to represent the Shades, Irondale, and Shades Valley High School, so we're so proud of her. Not only that, Doron Payne, if I know him, played at University of Alabama, uh, was the most valuable player in the national championship game, uh, also a Shades Valley kid, uh, played at Shades Valley High School, a Irondale kid. So we're so proud of those two. Mayor, uh, Trish is over there, I would like to sit down and maybe have a conversation and just kinda see what we can do to recognize those two, because they have, uh, you know, Mississippi State, they travel all over the world. Uh, Alabama, we know where, where they, they all over, all over the world also. And then one thing that we got, that we didn't, didn't cause us anything, is that when they show where they're from, they say Shades Valley High School, and it says Irondale, Alabama, you know, and that's, and they are a great representation of our kids in Irondale. And I would love to sit down and have a conversation and kinda see what we can, how can we recognize those two, uh, for the city around here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Uh, just to mention again, we still have a call-out for resumes for anyone interested in being a member of the Commercial Development Authority. We have, uh, three terms that are up for replacement. Uh, two incumbents still have their resumes and the hat, so to speak, at this point, but we do have three slots that'll be coming up between now and, I think we said, the end of April is the official cutoff, no matter what?
March, same.
What's, what did we say? March? So definitely three. I don't think we've received any additional, we've got one additional resume that came unsolicited before we put out the call, but, uh, we'd love to have some choices, and what I would like to do is have that, uh, open for resumes to come in through the first meeting next month.
Uh, we misspoke, we thought, thought you were talking about the, uh, terms or ending. I think the end of April is final.
Yeah.
Not March, but, but March, I think, is when the terms are.
Right.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is if we can get resumes in by the end of this month, and hopefully have a setup to where the council would be able at the workstation before the first council meeting in, uh, that would be made, we would be able to interview those candidates. So... That would be, uh, so, if anybody...
Do, um, you know, who terms is up, coming up? Do you, David, you know, what terms?
We finally decided it was everybody but Cindy, they've just been re-elected, and Terrence.
Okay.
Did, did we ever find out if Terrence is still a resident of Irondale?
Yes, that's, that was verified, and I think presented at this meeting.
Okay.
So, uh, one of those on the, on the term, and we apply also. Okay.
And some of these will be filling terms that are already a year into the term or better, so it will be a completion of the term. Uh, but again, a lot of people have ideas of what they'd like to do for the city. We can use your help now, if you would be glad to participate. Uh, right now, they're meeting once a month, uh, but, uh, maybe meeting more frequently as things, uh, start moving forward. But again, you need to be aware that it does require some of your time, but they, uh, have the routine meetings, so you can plan a schedule around it in most cases. You met the new chairman tonight, and he introduced himself, so please keep that in mind. Um, at the next meeting, uh, Council Bearden will be chairing that meeting, I will not be available for reasons, uh, that I can't be here, uh, but basically, uh, he will be chairing the next meeting, so that will be, uh, and I think Council Spivey has asked that for the, uh, work session, the Monday before that meeting, there are a couple of items he would like to have discussed at that work session. And would you like to mention those for sake of reference, or?
Um, just for sake of reference, I know we'll be taking a look at the basketball contract as far, or the gym contract with Jeff Coed and, uh, and Shades Valley High School. I think we've pretty much got that worked out, we just need to finalize it maybe.
You're not.
Okay, perfect. As long as we just need to go ahead and get that going. I know you mentioned fall or something like that, it needs to be in place for fall, possibly?
I'm not aware of the timing. I haven't heard of Mr. London.
Gotcha. Well, we'll talk more about it.
Okay.
And then we want to talk about the, thank you, we want to talk about the slam sports contract over in the baseball, and, and make sure we either agree that it's a good contract, a bad contract, or it just needs to stay the way it is.
Does everybody need, uh, the city clerk to send out additional copies? I know we've had copies, but some people may still not have theirs.
I know, I've got them.
We got, we got a contract, an individual to keep the park up, and he was gonna put thousands of dollars' worth of improvements into it. We look at that contract as well, I don't recall.
That's the one we're talking about, sir.
Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We just need to make a decision on that contract and, and move forward.
Do you mind sending a mini copy? Thank you. So, Mr. Stewart will get that out to you before the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, also the overall ordinances, also.
Okay. Yeah, just let James know, so I have a general idea, you're gonna try to cover apparently the one on parking vehicles.
Y'all would just let James know, David, would you put a agenda together with those items on it for that, uh, for that work session? Okay.
And now, do I have any reports of boards or non-council committees? Yes, Mayor?
May I turn around?
Yes, Mayor.
Hi, my name is Tella Shoemaker, I'm the executive director, excuse me, of the Irondale, uh, Greater Irondale Chamber of Commerce, and I just would like for y'all to know that we have a couple of things coming up. Uh, first, this Friday, at ten o'clock, there will be a ribbon cutting for the new Simply Ten. And back here, we do have Austin and Mark, y'all, eh, be friendly, there you go. But everyone is invited, and we're, uh, very excited to have them be here as an Irondale neighbor. Also, next week, uh, is the April Chamber Luncheon, on Thursday, April the twelfth, eleven-thirty to one, at Country Country Club. And Randy Powell, who is the manager of the new Mercedes, uh, will be our speaker, he's also, uh, Coach Nick Salin's partner. So, uh, I think that will be a great meeting, and you're all invited, it's twenty dollars per member and twenty-five dollars, uh, per non-member. And, uh, last, we do have our second annual Irondale Chamber Classic, uh, which will be Tuesday, uh, May the fifteenth, at Country Country Club. It will be, uh, shotgun, eight o'clock. If anybody would like to participate or sponsor, please see me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I move that we leave regular council meeting and go into a public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And bear with me, a long lead tonight. Notice is hereby given that a regular public meeting began at six PM on Tuesday, April third, two thousand eighteen, and the council meeting room at Irondale City Hall, located one-on-one Twentieth Street South, Irondale, Alabama, the city council of the city of Irondale, will hear comments from interested citizens concerning proposed grant of certain economic incentives pursuant to a project development, funding, and cooperation agreement as amended by and between the city and Ten Below LLC doing business as Simply Ten pursuant to amendment number seven-seven-two to the Constitution of Alabama of nineteen oh one and the purpose of the city granting to the developer certain economic incentives to be loca-, uh, uh, related to the project to be located in the city of Irondale, Alabama. This project will promote the economic development of the city by including industrial and commercial enterprises to locate new facilities in the city. The city proposes to pay the developer owner before the fifth day following the end of each, uh, calendar quarter for the preceding quarter a sales tax rebate of one-half of the total sales tax paid to the city attributable to the gross sales generated by the project until the first to the curb of seven years from the opening of the project, or payment to the developer of ninety-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. The public benefits sought to be achieved by the grant of incentives related to the project is promotion of economic development of the city by including industrial and commercial enterprises to locate new facilities in the city, which would result in additional tax revenues for the city and additional jobs for the city's citizens. For purposes of amendment number seven-seven-two to the Constitution of Alabama nineteen oh one, Ten Below LLC doing business as Simply Ten is the business entity for whose benefit the city proposes to lend its credit or grant public funds or things of value. I will first be open to take any comments supporting this move. We do have some representatives here, if you wanted to make a comment additional to what you made in the past. Please, if you don't mind stepping up, please, if you come forward, and since this is a public hearing, you're welcome to turn in that direction, okay? Thank you.
I did want to say, uh, you're definitely welcome to come out Friday, hopefully, uh, ten o'clock, and we'll be cutting the ribbon, and welcome, uh, we're very excited about being a part of Irondale, not only as a warehouse, but a retail store. We've got women's clothing, ten dollars or less, and, uh, and, uh, we have, uh, plus sizes as well as junior sizes, and accessories and shoes.
And that's our, this will be our forty-first store that we have in our chain, so we're proud to have one here at our, at our corporate, uh, office.
Thank you very much. Do I have any comments in opposition to this proposal?
Um, question, will this be your distribution center as well as, uh, the store?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. If I have no additional comments, I make a motion that we leave regular council, uh, leave public hearing and go back into regular council meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, at this point, uh, we need to approve the agenda, and please note that under unfinished business, we will not be voting to approve either of those items, we will be, uh, voting to postpone both indefinitely. And, uh, we can talk about circumstances when we come to that part of the discussion. Would anybody like to move the agenda forward and vote that one?
I have a question before we move on to the approval of the new, uh, new, under new business. Uh, under item number one, can we, um, emphasize or include, um, getting an update from the mayor as far as what kind of negotiations he's in, uh, with the tax incentives? Can we get an update as far as we could, even if there's not an update, we need to know that?
Can you ask me a question?
It was, it was directed to you, yes, sir.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I can give one of those.
As far as time? Time?
Uh, as they're available, yeah. I'll give you updates as they're available, if I've got something to update, sure.
Okay. All right. If there's someone that would like to go forward with the agenda approval.
I'd like a motion that the agenda be approved with the following changes. Uh, item number one and two under unfinished business be postponed indefinitely. Number one and two under due business be presented as they are on the agenda.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay? Okay. The first one, uh, what we will do is take independent on each one of these to suspend them, uh, or postpone them indefinitely. The first one, we're moving forward because those funds have been withdrawn, that's why we're postponing indefinitely.[1799.51] The first one we're moving forward because those funds have been withdrawn, that's why we're postponing indefinitely. City clerk advised us that was the best way to do it, to get it off the agenda since it was whole business that needed to come back on the agenda for this meeting. So do I have a motion move forward with that?
I make a motion that we move forward with resolution twenty eighteen R dash twenty being postponed indefinitely.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And the second motion, please, there's.
I make a motion that ordinance twenty eighteen dash oh five be postponed indefinitely.
And just a comment on that before I call for the second, the developer pulled that plot out of the mix so it was not up for sale. Okay? Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now, are there any comments from the public on agenda items that we will be voting on to move forward tonight? On agenda items only, and that's the two resolutions, one resolution, one ordinance, both related to incentives. All right? If not, we'll go directly into new business.
I make a motion that resolution twenty eighteen R twenty-two be approved.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilor Bearden, would you be kind enough to?
I make a motion that ordinance twenty eighteen dash six be considered read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance twenty eighteen dash six be suspended and unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Councilor London?
Yes.
Councilor Spivey?
Yes.
Councilor Bearden?
Yes.
Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
I make a motion that ordinance number twenty eighteen dash six be finally passed and adopted as introduced.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. All right. Thank you on that. And now we're open to any public comments to the council.
Yeah, if I could just, just to respond and clarify, Councilor Wilson, just, just for the record and so everyone is clear, I will give you all an update two weeks from tonight on the GDM. So when we come back together as a group, I will update you on that. You'll have that then to review. You'll actually have information before that meeting, but you'll have opportunity to discuss it then at that meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have any?
Thank you, ma'am.
Do I have any general comments from the public tonight? If you're going to come forward, we'd appreciate you filling out the form in the back and remember your limited time. Thank you.
Regina Bearman, forty fifty-six, you're born in Irondale. I know Terry mentioned the Miss Senior Irondale pageant. And the bylaws of the Miss Senior Alabama pageant is that you must have three contestants to have a local pageant. So we have two that have said that they would do it. So I do need one more. I set the pageant for June the sixteenth. If we only have three contestants, we will just do it at the Senior Citizen Activity Center. And I just, I, I hope that people will try hard to encourage just one more lady to do it because they're having the Miss Senior Alabama pageant in Irondale. And I just think it would look kind of tacky or inappropriate for us to not have a contestant. So please, if your grandmother or your wife or whomever, your sister qualifies by being sixty years or older, live, work, or worship in Irondale, or have a grandchild or a child that attends one of the schools in Irondale City Limits, which does include Jefferson Christian. Please, we just need one more. We'll take as many as wants to do it, but we have to have one more to be able to move forward. Thank you.
Let me make a comment about that. Because of Regina's efforts, Miss Senior Alabama contest is coming to Irondale. They were planning, looking for a place in Birmingham, but she suggested Shays Valley High School and they got with the principal there and because of Regina's efforts, we've got that pageant in Irondale.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public tonight? Yes, ma'am.
Cindy Quayle, fifty-seven twenty-nine Belmont Drive. I'd like to take this opportunity, first of all, thank the city council and the mayor for everything that you've done to provide us with the information that we need making an informed decision on April the tenth. This began way back in July and August when we were working on the budget. You saw that there was going to be a deficit. The mayor sent it back to the department heads. They sharpened their pencils, they lowered the deficit. But what was unforeseen is that Sands was going to be closing. And I really appreciate what the mayor has done to inform the citizens of Irondale. The slideshow presentation that you gave us, you made it easy for us this past weekend during Easter dinner. Many friends and neighbors came together and we were able to take a look at that. It was on the website. And I was able to talk with people and say, let your friends know. If you want to be informed, if you want to know what's going on, take a look at the slide presentation. Because many of us did not know about the fifty-five billion dollar debt that we have, bond debt that we have. Many of us didn't know about the fact that that deficit is now one point six million. Many folks in Irondale didn't know that we only have three million in reserves. And most especially, many people in Irondale were not aware of the fact that we haven't had a property tax increase in well over twenty years. So when you take all that into account and you look at the ratings of municipalities as to where we're at, when you look at the slideshow, you'll see that we need to take action if we want to keep this city moving forward, if you want to keep having a great police department, if you want to keep having a great public works department, and if you want to keep having a great fire department and the great service that we receive in the city of Irondale, here at city hall. So I just want to take this time to thank you for everything that you did. Because it's important that we be informed and the transparency that you've given us to make a good decision. And because of that, I will be voting for the property tax increase. I don't like raising taxes, but I realize the need. And as a citizen who cares about our entire community, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just a quick closing comment. Remember, all voting is here at city hall. You don't go to your different polling places. And the polls will be open from seven A.M. till seven P.M. And with that, if there's no more comments, excuse me. Oh, Tom, sorry.
Donald Allen, thirteen thirty-five Montalva Road, Irondale. I just have a question concerning one item. Now, is, was this a document put out by the city on the taxes?
Can't tell what you're holding up. You might show it to the mayor, be closer.
This is the slide.
Was this?
That's the presentation from the town hall meeting.
Yes, okay. Just wanted to verify that. On public services infrastructure, it says provide universal access telecommunications and high-speed internet. Could somebody please give me a little information on exactly how the city will influence that?
That, that's an excerpt from, directly from the comprehensive plan. And so if you look at your slides there, it says that the funds will be used on items such as not all-inclusive, not all-exclusive. That's a direct excerpt from the comprehensive plan that's going to be downloaded.
I guess the question that, well, raised my question, we have service providers in the city that already provide telecommunications and high-speed internet from a number of sources. And I was just kind of curious that.
There's some, you might speak to it today, just some companies that we're looking at, talking to, expressing interest to public or anything.
Yes, since the market is open up with, you have a lot of your telecommunications or your cell phone providers are now wanting to get into communities to be able to provide services and also to have franchise agreements with municipalities to be able to provide the services as well. That in the comprehensive plan, when it was talking about those telecommunications services, there are certain places in Irondale where we have dead spots. So that was not talking about the city taking on the telecommunications, but allowing the providers in the area to share that information with them so that they can work to strengthen those areas where their dead spot is.
Several, several years ago, we had a communication company come to Irondale and they leased, wanted to put them up on telephone poles in the city.
Yes, they were going to put the little boxes on top of the city. What is it?
Are they still in operation?
We haven't heard anything else from them since.
Yeah, I know, it's been, it's been a while.
I think that, I think that. The short answer to the question is that telecommunications are always changing. That's a forward-looking statement by the committee or the group that formed. It's more, it's a comprehensive plan. It'll be something we'll talk about today or something we'll talk about, yeah. I don't know what, three years from now or more.
Changing every day.
Every day.
Everyone. Well, the, the question that came to my mind was the city be involved in the providing this service? And you explained what it is, so that's all I have.
We would like to be the franchise owners.
Collect money. Thank you very much, sir.
If I can, oh, go ahead. I want to introduce the board members.
Brandon Reed, this is for you. Can I ask Councilor Spivey to give a little background on the unfinished business that was indefinitely postponed? My understanding from the last meeting was that it would come for an up or down vote, was he?
Are you referring to twenty eighteen R twenty? Okay. So after the last meeting, excuse me, after the last meeting, the Whistler Stop Festival saw it fit to, I guess say thanks but no thanks. So they are looking for a different venue for the festival. And the crowd source funding was refunded. So the thirty-five hundred that was, we technically had a source to pull from. Last meeting is, is no longer there and the foundation is not interested in negotiating a contract with the city.
So by a different venue, you mean outside of Irondale?
That's accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, did you have one?
I'd just like to introduce Jen Gray. Jen, if you will stand up. Jen, I just met in the town hall meeting last week. Found out that she lives in Irondale, Montalva Road, I think, and you're a candidate for?
Alabama House of Representatives District forty-five, which all y'all, most of y'all should be in. So it's Irondale, Leeds, Vincent, and then it's really bad gerrymandered. It comes all the way back down to Hoover and picks up part of Grace of Hoover. So that's the district that I'm in and so that's what I'm running for. And I hope you guys will visit my website or come out and talk to me. I'd really like to hear what's important to all of you. Because if I'm going to be your representative, that's what I want to know is what's important to my citizens.
Jen, the best district that Dickie Gray now.
Dickie Gray's the best guy.
A true PhD.
Well, yeah, I mean, I can give a chalk talk if you want, yes. I have a, I have a PhD in pharmaceutical chemistry. I have, I decided to, I didn't know how much time I had. I didn't want to take up all of y'all's time. I decided to run for this office following last year's almost stoppage of the autism bill, the autism, Alabama Autism Bill, insurance bill. And that was going to be something that did allow for Alabama to, individuals to have their insurance cover autism therapies, which can be between five and ten thousand dollars a year to people who are on the spectrum, and really make a difference between children who are going to grow up to be sometimes functioning adults in society and those that are going to be cared for by, by us. And they had almost one hundred percent support of all the constituents, Republicans, Democrats, across the boards. And they, in the senate, they tried to almost just use kind of tricks to pull it back. And that was when I decided that I, my daughter is on the autism spectrum and I decided that I couldn't leave her fate and the fate of our children in the hands of people who are going to listen to lobbyists and not the citizens and decided to run. So I hope you come out and talk to me and tell me what's important to you. Y'all know it's kind of what's important to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, are we safe assuming we can have a motion to close?
You ask this young, young car or anything?
I do, I do, yes, sir, thank you.
That's it, just one more.
Anybody like to make a motion to close? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you everyone for doing the evening tonight.